I'd like to call the orders of the board supervised meeting work session. And first thing on our agenda tonight is the presentation from the emergency management plan overview. And Rick, I'm turning it over to you, sir.
All right. Hey, good evening, Mr. May and everyone. My name is Rick Farrell. I'm your cost recovery manager, your deputy emergency manager, and firefighter team. Tonight, Mr. Stanley's asked me to talk to you about emergency management oversight. It'll be a very brief executive overview. We're going to talk about the EOP. We're going to talk about declaring an emergency, what your role in an emergency is, and what Mr. Stanley and staff role in emergencies.
Is the microphone on? I can't hear anything.
It's on.
Pull it up there.
So, the EOP, declare an emergency, your role, and Mr. Stanley and the staff's role. So, our emergency operations plan, we, every locality is required to have a plan by the state law. We have such a plan. We review it every four years. It was last adopted by the board in November of 17. It's next due in November of '21. And so, I'll start working on that this fall. So, we'll get back with you guys, give a little bit of guidance, and then over that next year, I'll chip away at making updates with all the department heads. And then, it goes back to the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. They look it over before it comes back to you all for approval. And then, we adopt it. That plan is effective for execution whenever we declare an emergency. And it's also, in fact, every day for training and pre-disaster preparedness. So, declare an emergency. We should declare an emergency with coordinated responses necessary between local agencies here, department heads, social services, et cetera. If we have something going on, and we don't need to declare an emergency, that's fine. We just handle it like we would do it every day. It's only until we become overwhelmed by the situation that we think we need to maybe tap into some financial reserves and commit funds and resources outside of the ordinary that we would want to think about declaring an emergency. When we do declare an emergency, the state will expect that we've done everything we can at the local level to help ourselves. If we require a formal request from the state for help, such as bulldozers, pallets of water, whatever, we could get a bill for that. So, we need to understand that. If we ask for mutual aid help for a locality, that is customary free as long as we have a mutual aid request with that locality. And as long as they've also declared an emergency, and the governor and the president has declared an emergency, they can recruit those funds over time coming to help us through their declaration. Right? So, if we want to go mutually as much as we can. And then, all the late disaster-related expenditures, we'd really have to document that well, and that will go through our finance department and through me. And I think last time my predecessor did this, it was almost a year and a half, Doug, and we got that snowstorm money back. It is worth it. It just takes time. And that's only if we've declared an emergency, the governor's declared, and the president has declared. And then, just so you all know, we usually do not have a problem reading this, but we have to have eligible costs of $4 or more per capita. So, that's about $160,000 for us. We usually surpass that in just a dot cleanup cost if it's a winter storm or something like that, in order for us to be able to put in food and water. So, your role, if we do declare an emergency, you all would need to convene and make an amendment and formally declare the emergency. In writing, you all sign it, and we have it. Our goal is to have that done in five days. And we're talking about who can declare an emergency on the next slide. But the state goal is within 45 days. So, if we have an emergency tomorrow, whatever your next scheduled meeting is, is when the state would expect us to formally declare that emergency. But if we can't do that because of other conditions, don't permit whatever, then you could go out to that 45 days. We try to have it done sooner than later. And then, as soon as you all think it's prudent, we want to de-escalate and put the emergency to the side and go back to normal operations as soon as possible. So, our designated key leaders, the director of emergency services, IR EOP is the chairman. The coordinator of emergency services is the fire chief. And that's customary in most localities unless that locality has a designated emergency management department that's independent of the fire department. Some of the Fairfax and some of the larger cities would have that, but we don't. The county and department heads play a role as well. Doug has a role in the EOC. Bob has a role, as does Karen and Brinney and Andre or Andre for the place. And we'll talk through that here. So, Mr. May's responsibilities, he is a legal authority for approving the EOP and for declaring a local emergency along with the fire chief. So, between the director or the coordinator, we can do that initial emergency declaration. Mr. May, in conjunction with the chief, will directly control emergency operations and issue directives to services and organizations concerning the disaster. We will do that typically through the EOC if activated. If not, then it's, you know, my office is the first EOC, if you will. We have a second layer, which would be Doug and just a few key leaders, and then the third layer would include the department heads, which we'll talk about here. In succession to Mr. May, right now, our EOP has a five-board emergency department as the director of emergency services. So, the coordinator of emergency services is the fire chief, and all the day-to-day activities of emergency preparedness have been delegated to the chief. He's assisted by me and the department heads. Primarily, we maintain the emergency operations plan. We maintain emergency operations center at the public safety building and any other responsibilities that are outlined with the state, training requirements, meetings, et cetera. And just like with Mr. May, the coordinator, in conjunction with the director, will directly control the emergency. So, ideally, the director and coordinator are outside the EOC with the emergency itself, and the county administrator and the staff are inside the EOC doing all that coordination. So, our department heads, when we do activate the EOC at the public safety building, the command section of the incident command system, if you're familiar with that, would be the county administrator. The operations section would be run by the county administrator. The planning section is the planning director, logistics and security services. And the finance admin section is our finance director. All of those folks are going through a series of online ICS 100, 200, 700, 800, and section-specific training. Our goal is to have that training done by this summer. So, we very briefly touched on the emergency operations plan, how to declare an emergency, your role, and Mr. Stanley and the department head's roles. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Could you give us a scenario of a type of disaster? And I know you've done a lot of them before, but just to give an idea, oh, I'm sorry. Just to give an idea of something, you don't have to do in great detail, but just an idea of a particular type of disaster.
If we had a flood that was large enough to impact bridges or neighborhoods, water loss of homes that we have to do assessments on, we would probably want to declare that emergency in the state of the EOC. If it's not that large, I mean, it could be catastrophic to a few families, but we don't need to declare an emergency. We can still handle it.
Okay. And those kind of scenarios are in this plan so that with, you know, once that kind of a flood that happens with those different scenarios, it's an automatic, you pick up your manual, and you've got a reference point for each of those individuals?
It's the, the EOP is broad in nature, and those section-specific duties that are the operations, the planning, those are natural fits for those people who are in the positions now. So, as we go into the EOC, it becomes clearer, as Mr. May gives us some of his guidance, as we get guidance from Mr. Stanley, and we start working, the EOC, just like we would in military attack, you know? And so, but big forest fires, snowstorms, floods, that's what we would be thinking.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Rick, two things. One, if you could talk about the mock drill, like last year, we go through trial and annual basis. And then, maybe two, talk about our shelter provisions, where we're at now with those two things.
Sure. So, some of the things that we're focused on, sheltering being one of them. We started off at Skyline High School as we thought was our primary shelter. And as we really dug into it and walked around, we found that we didn't have power to all parts of shelter because of the wiring of the building wasn't on a circuit breaker for a full section. It was all over the place. So, the emergency generator wasn't connected, so we didn't want to go there. So, we moved to middle school. Middle school has actually turned out to be fantastic. We did identify that the emergency generator was not connected to all the power for the emergency shelter. We had a contractor come in, we took care of it, it's powered, kill the power generator comes on, it's beautiful. So, the whole back half of the building where the cafeteria is, if you're familiar with that.
Is this the new middle school or the Warren County Middle School as a shelter?
That's right. So, that entire back half of the building that's designated as shelter is powered by the generator. So, we're stockpiling cots there. If you've noticed, there's a Red Cross trailer outside. There's cots in that trailer provided by the Red Cross. And social services, we do a walk-through about twice a year. We'll do another walk-through this summer, and then we'll do an exercise the year after. Social services has mainly for our sheltering. The Red Cross will come in and assist if they're available, but we're not counting on that. So, we've put a lot of work and effort into our plan to take care of that. So, between social services and a few of our folks, we will run, we'll run the shelter, shut social services down, operate the shelter. The schools play a huge role in that with logistics and food and water and some other things, too. So, I think we have a pretty good plan to shelter folks at the middle school if we've ever had to do that. The drill, the EOC drill, so we've had a few EOC drills last year. We'll do a few more this summer. We had the Virginia Department of Emergency Management come up. My next contact is in Culpeper, Region 2. They sent some folks up, and we went through some tabletop exercises with the EOC, got people familiar with their roles, transitioning from deputy county administrator to the operations chief. Right. And we'll continue to do that throughout the year. We invest in laptop computers there, so they just come in, they'll have a laptop right there, and they can start a little work at their workstation. We've got maps already prepared, printers going over into dispatch, so I think we're pretty good. And we saw the radio room. We've got ham radio operators that are volunteers that are fabulous, and we can send voice and data to Richmond back and forth successfully without ever touching the internet. So, if comms did go down and we needed to send or receive something from Richmond, we can do that. We can do that.
Mr. Popchuk, something?
Yeah. I bet the flu epidemic was to hit here, and it was really getting, would get bad. How would you handle it?
So, that's a tiny question. So, I'll say, let's just say today, we had a very good example today. From my perspective, it was a home run. We had a patient 911 call. The dispatchers did what they were supposed to do. They ran through the algorithm of questions, and the dispatcher determined that that's a possible coronavirus patient. So, before we ever made patient contact, we knew that we could yell out, maintain that distance of six feet until we know what's going on. And then, we can protect ourselves, protect the patient. We call the hospital. The hospital can be prepared to receive that patient. Hospital receives a patient, they go through the algorithm again, they coordinate with the Virginia Department of Health, and determine if that patient needs to be tested or not. That's a DDH decision on whether we're doing testing because the test kits nationwide aren't so short supply. So, our local doctors call DDH. They consult, which ultimately has a decision over if that patient gets tested for the coronavirus. So, I know we've put out a press release today. The biggest thing, I think, that you all can tell your constituents is wash your hands. If you're sick, stay home. If you know anybody that's sick, stay back. And for heaven's sakes, don't go to Japan, don't go to Korea, don't go to Italy, I mean, don't go to China. We don't want to do that right now. And limit your travel. And the other thing is, you know, with the elderly, for those folks that already have pre-existing conditions, cardiac or respiratory conditions, they are vulnerable. So, you probably want to limit your travel as well, even locally, go to Walmart. You know, at some point, they, you know, think about limiting that as well. But every day, I look at the website, I watch the numbers, I'm talking to our DDH folks locally here at the health department, I'm talking to folks at the hospital, and we're all communicating about this. But at the end of the day, though, it comes down to individual responsibility. And if you think you have it, call your doctor. Don't just show up. And the big thing again is just washing your hands and, you know, staying away from folks that are sick.
I had the opportunity, and honestly, the pleasure, back when I first started this position as the new chairman, going up and visiting your office. When we, to be frank, I thought it was just a visit to see people. And I walked in, and y'all took over. And it was very enlightening to see that you've got 10 or 11 people in that one room doing the job that you're supposed to do. And they, to let everybody know, they sat me down and told me what was going on. And I appreciated it because it was the first time that I've seen the responsibility that the chairman has for our public. And I just wanted to thank you for it because it was a good presentation. It helped me a lot. And I know I want to feel that I'm ready to help you do your job and to let you do your job. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Do we have any questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
The individuals that are delineating this plan, are they set in code or are they just specific to this county?
They are specific to the incident command system positions, and then we tailor the face to the states.
So, every county would have the same format, so to speak?
Not necessarily. Some counties, there's two ways you could organize. You could organize by incident command system. Traditionally, it's your operations, your plans, your finance sections. Or you could organize by emergency support functions, which if you go to the Virginia EOC in the basement of the state with tech workers, that's how they're organized. But they are staffed to have folks in all of those positions. It's huge. The floor is huge. We can't do that. So, for us, we organize by the traditional method, and in the case of Bob under his operations hat, he would have several of those emergency support functions that he would be responsible for. We have identified people in the county that would fill each one of those contact panels who's called for public safety, et cetera.
Okay. Second question. The South Warren Volunteer Farm, or used to be a shelter site because it has a backup generator that covers the whole site? Are they no longer a shelter site?
They are still an official Red Cross shelter. However, from a management perspective, the middle school and even the high school, because of what the school system brings strategically to running the shelter, that's the way to go. If we were to go to the South Warren or have to house where the patient sits, because of the demo's building, which is also a Red Cross heavenly shelter, we would have to scramble with social services and all those things that the school system brings to us because we have food and water, we're going to have to find them somewhere else. So, that's why those, I would look at those maybe some day morning shelters, and if you really truly need to come stand next to one and get a meal, we're going to hold them soon.
Something like power outages and smoochings?
Yes. Or maybe they could be taking out my lawfare, and maybe you don't have a camera, you don't too, but they can't afford to tell.
Thank you.
If I can add, too, Rick, a lot of that is due to, if nothing else, but numbers. You know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't put two people in the middle school that we had to relocate. You'd probably end up putting those in a hotel, working with the Red Cross and putting those in a hotel. If the disaster or event would be maybe in South Warren's area down there, rather than have to truck them all up to the middle school, too, we'd put a handful. So, there is still a need for Company 3 to continue their certification as a shelter.
Any other questions at all? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next one on our agenda is the pre-trial services expansion grant. Mr. Stanley and Mr. Gilkinson?
Mr. Chairman, in your packet, you get a letter that was sent out from the director of the Department of Criminal Justice Services. They're soliciting grant applications for pre-trial service expansion from localities that do not currently receive state funds for pre-trial services. The governor proposed budget for years '21 and '22 includes $2.3 million for pre-trial services and local probation. In your packet, there's a couple of different pieces of correspondence. One that I want to point out, that's a little fact sheet that talks about Department of Criminal Justice Services. They have pre-trial services in 100 out of 133 localities in the state of Virginia. They interview and investigate defendants held in jail shortly after their arrest, use a validated risk assessment, conduct criminal record checks and verify information to help judges make a more informed decision about which defendant should be held in jail or released. They help reduce unnecessary detention and contribute public safety by providing appropriate supervision options at court for defendants awaiting trial. The letter attached to the back is from Kim Tramora from the Old Dominion Court Services Unit, which covers Warren County. In that letter, and I'm going to read from paragraph three, Frederick County is the administrative and fiscal agent for the Old Dominion Court Services group. If selected for the grant, Frederick County would continue to function as such. This grant does not require any local funding match and would not require any financial obligations from Warren County. I do not, I do know that Warren County currently provides an office for use by them, the ASAP program. There's a little brick building sitting on the front of the courthouse across from Town Hall that they utilize for the ASAP program. I've asked the superintendent to join us. There are some positive benefits. I'll let Russ talk about those. When they talk about no match, there's no match required. The problem is, after maybe two or three years down the road, if the grant funds dry up outside of this, by any, and they're not replaced, they can always look at Warren County and say, hey, we'd like you to replace these funds with local funds. Now, you can make the argument that spending money there is possibly more cost-effective than housing overnight at the jail. And I'll let Russ talk a little bit about that. There's some advantage, some impact on his staff and work they would not have to do if you had the pre-trial services. But this will, because of the timing, I have to place this on next week's agenda. I wanted to give you an opportunity to at least hear a little bit about it tonight, talk about it. Kim is on vacation this week. She will be here at next week's meeting to answer specific questions, but I at least wanted to broach the subject tonight to make you familiar with it. And with that, Russ, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Currently, there's no pre-trial services being offered to the three-member jurisdictions that we utilize our study. With Warren County, you know, and each one of the other court jurisdictions, we receive orders daily typically to put somebody on drug screening or alcohol screening protocol, which is going to require them to come once a week, twice a week, three times a month. It just depends on what the order says. Our staff and the dollars that we receive from each one of the counties goes to pay for those tests. We do try to collect reimbursement funds from the individuals that are assigned those drug screens that they pay for to help offset the cost. Unfortunately, not all of them have the ability to pay, or they can quickly figure out that, you know, if they don't pay, they're still going to get their tests anyways because it's called order, and, you know, there's, we don't really have any recourse. So, those numbers have kind of been, you know, reducing as time's gone on because people have kind of figured out, well, we don't have to pay it, or they feel they don't have to pay it. And the court could always come back and order that they do, but we haven't, of course. Typically, we're bringing in about $31,000 a year in revenue by doing those drug tests. Of that, about half covers the cost of the actual tests that are utilized. The other parts of that funds go to help pay for the additional drug tests that we utilize at the facility as well, plus the man-hours that it takes to perform the test, write the letters back to the courts, letting them know, you know, what the results of the test are. If somebody's in compliance, out of compliance, we have a lot of people that are out of compliance that fail the test, so those results have to be sent to the test. And Commonwealth, each one of the courts and the judges determine how they want to utilize those results. As far as pre-trial goes, if we had pre-trial services, they have a little more direct connection with the Commonwealth, and the judge, as far as discussing who would best be placed on a pre-trial-type program. And they do that because every morning, they would come into the facility, or after the weekend, they would come in on Monday mornings, they would interview those new incarcerated to determine what their risk assessment is for being released back out in the public on bond. Yes, sir.
So, if I understand correctly, that there's going to be a, if we have the pre-trial grant, the speed in which these people are taken care of is going to be better than, is it going to be any better than what you have already?
It could identify more people to actually be part of a pre-trial program, which would potentially give them a bond. It could get them out of the, you know, back into the public, back to their job quicker because current, you know, we don't do any type of risk assessment. You know, we're not, you know, there's no way for us to do that. We're not trained to do that. Pre-trial services, they are. Most other jurisdictions have had pre-trial services for quite a while. It's just kind of something that's been moving farther to the west here. And the reason they do that is they want to try to get people out of jail because it costs a lot of money. You know, as I've reported it, you know, it's over $80 a day without, what's the word we're doing? Building costs, you know, or capital. Capital costs, thank you, to housing them. So, of course, if we have people that can be back, put back out in the community, work and still be under the, you know, supervision of someone, you know, that that may be even more cost-effective than that. There's, you know, we don't have any statistics to support that locally because we've not had those types of services. So, they're estimating that, go ahead, I'm sure.
Well, we know that it costs roughly $87 or somewhere around about there to house somebody overnight. If we weren't housing that person, and we just did the drug test or whatever, do you know how much difference it would be, how much of a cost savings we would actually get?
I mean, the test is approximately $10.
Okay. So, $10 versus $87.
And what Old Dominion's saying is that, you know, through that grant funding, that they're going to be able to buy those tests, and, you know, so it's, could be a potential win for everybody, but, you know, there's no guarantee. There's no guarantee that each one of these courts are going to say, yes, I'm going to put somebody on pre-trial. So, you know, time's going to tell. You know, if the courts have a big say in this, how these programs operate.
Russ, what amount of money is potentially gained in this grant? Do we know how much we might get?
I don't. I mean, this is not something that, we're going after this as Old Dominion Court Services.
Okay.
That they're, they're the ones seeking the grant. It's not something our study, it's not something we can go after.
So, you've got 33 localities in Virginia that do not have pre-trial services, and you've got $2.3 billion split over two years. So, they're going to be vying for those- you've got 2.3 billion split over two years, so they're gonna be vying for those dollars, potentially. So not everybody probably will get funded, but, you know, it would be Warren and Shenandoah, really, if our study, they would qualify, so.
Do you know when we'd have to have our application in, the, is it next?
We would have to take action at our next board meeting if we wanted to opt in and have them apply for the grant.
Okay, so time is of the essence.
Time is of the essence.
I'm sorry.
So, well, I'm just trying to figure out the risk, you know, the risk of doing the grant, you know, when you get money from the government, there's always strings attached. So I'd like to understand, like, so they could eventually take that grant, the grant could, depending on the administration elected in Virginia, that grant could eventually dry up, and then we have a pre-trial services organization in place that we're gonna continue? Is that?
Or not continue, I think there you would be able to say, you've been able to, you know, 35 people last year were directed outside and we had X number of bed nights maybe that were avoided, you might be able to quantify it at that point. So maybe it's, it potentially could be a two-year trial period to see if there is any savings.
So, I mean, you have metrics that you could work off of.
You know, I think if the decision's made and we forward with it, then we're gonna start keeping those statistics along with Old Dominion Court Services to determine, okay, is it working, is it not?
Right.
Is it saving money or is it not? And that way, we can come back and, you know, let you all know if it saved X amount of dollars or it cost us X amount of dollars.
I have a question. If, at this point, we don't know how much Old Dominion plans to charge per person to do what their casework is for that person, correct?
From what I've gathered, they're not gonna charge anything.
Well, I mean, this.
I don't believe they're allowed to.
Okay.
Is it what the discussion I had with Mr. Murr, that she may be able to tell you something different, but that's the way she explained it today.
Okay, 'cause my thought was if we, they get the grant and there's no obligation, if there's no obligation after that to continue the service, we're basically, we don't, we don't have much cost to have a person there right now, and we have no idea if any of the judges that work this area are gonna like pre-trial services and even take advantage of them, so it's, it's, you know, as long as it's not, I hate to waste anybody's money, but, you know, it's kind of an unknown. It looks like they would not only come to us, but have they gone to the judges to get their ideas?
And I don't know. That's a question from Mr. Murr. I know she's had discussions with them, and I don't know what that meant to her.
Because the whole thing seems like it would be a waste if the judges are like, no, nope, every time you bring something, no.
I do know that there, you know, there has been a push beyond the current administration at the state or the Commonwealth to have pre-trial services. So this is something that's been coming, you know, I think it was looked at two years ago, and I think we just, you know, they missed out on that bond, or the grant money, excuse me. So I don't think it's something that's gonna change if there's an administration change as far as the push to have pre-trial services, because I think the, historically, it's shown that it saves money because you're not incarcerating people.
Is it just drug testing, or is it another algorithm of, you know, potential questions that they answer and then they decide whether or not they're at risk?
I don't know what Old Dominion's process is as far as follow-up when somebody's put on the program, as far as the testing. I'm assuming typically there's conditions of, you know, if they're employed, they must stay employed, those types of things.
Right.
That they're gonna keep those stats and report those back to the, to the sentencing court.
A long time ago, when I was in college, I interned at probation and parole when I did pre-trial investigations, so, yeah, I don't have flashbacks anyway. So, yes, I understand.
I mean, right now, I don't see any risk of not doing it. If the grant money's there and they received it, it's not gonna cost the taxpayer any money, you could save them money, so, you know, I don't.
Yeah, I understand that, I just, the whole thing of not knowing where the judge is standing.
Sure.
If our area is not, the judges say, we don't know anything to do with it, and we get the money, then it's like, what do you do with it?
Yeah. And you could have some judges wanna use it, and some judges that say, no, that's possible.
Well, I think those are questions that we're gonna have to ask.
Right. Yeah, Ms. Tramora, is that who we asked? No? Okay. Could we email her in advance, maybe, and that way she'd be prepared?
Yeah, I actually, we were getting some questions for tonight taken care of.
Thank you.
We can do that.
Who typically are the pre-trial investigators?
They're employees of Old Dominion Court Services, what their background is, I don't know. I think what she had initially told me, she's looking at two, one to serve for Warren, one to serve for Shenandoah. You know, of course, they could, you know, have their mix, but, you know, that's what she's looking at, supplying the staff for the survey.
Independent.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Questions from the public? Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time. Next on our agenda is the Virginia Department of Transportation, 2020 Smart Scale application. Mr. Childers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At your January 14th meeting, I had presented a list containing 22 various projects that we'd identified as potential candidates through the VDOT Smart Scale Funding Program. At that time, I'd also mentioned to you that VDOT's screening criteria had become more stringent at the same time while available statewide funds are dwindling. These factors will have a significant impact on our success rate with future applications, so it's important and imperative that we move forward with sound and financially practical project applications. Since we discussed that initial list back in January, we've been in continual discussions with VDOT's staff to evaluate them and determine which locations would be the best possible applications to submit. At this point, we've reduced the list down to six possible projects, and you have a copy of those in your packet. And actually, some, specifically, some of the projects on the 34522 North Corridor were combined in order, we felt, to obtain a better score. But as we continue our dialogue with VDOT, it's possible that that final list will be reduced even further. The Smart Scale application period opened on the 3rd of March and is scheduled to close on April 3rd, so we basically have a month for the pre-application period. Any applications that we do submit will need to be submitted prior to that April 3rd closing date, or we've missed the two-year application window for these types of projects. At this point, the board needs to take no action in order for us to submit pre-applications. Once the initial screening's done and we learn whether or not we will submit final applications based on the pre-screened ones, then the board would need to pass a resolution at that point to submit along with the final applications. So at this time, I just wanted to let you know the few projects that we're still alive and we're still working on and to answer any questions you might have about them.
Are there any, are there any funds that are gonna be associated with this before? I mean, we're going through budget sessions right now.
No capital funds. These would be 100% VDOT-funded projects.
Thank you. Questions?
Mr. Childers, how do they prioritize? Like, how did they get from 22 to six?
Well.
Is there?
There's a combination of factors, Mrs. Oats. VDOT just went through an extensive revision to their overall statewide transportation plan, which is called VTrans. And frankly, through this last revision, it didn't do a whole lot for smaller localities such as ourselves that don't have high traffic volumes. So one of the first things VDOT looks at is whether or not the project, if they decide to fund it, would have any importance from a statewide or regional perspective. So that's the first criteria. If it's something that's not identified in VTrans as being critical, then it's, it's next off the list. Then secondarily, VDOT will look at environmental impacts. Is it, is it a huge impact to the environment, or does it lessen impacts to the environment? Is congestion a big factor, or the mitigation of congestion, current and proposed land uses adjacent to or around the project? Safety, of course, is there a high number of accidents, fatalities associated with those accidents? And then economic development, that plays a role. So those are some of the factors VDOT would look at. So if you all remember the first list I presented, some of them didn't really meet any of those, those five or six criteria that I mentioned, so that's why so many of them have been, you know, marked off initially.
Well, I noticed that the widening and lengthening of the existing northbound left-turn lane at Reliance Road is on this list.
It is.
I'm very excited to see that.
It is. And that was one that we combined. If you remember, when we presented the original list, we had identified a safety project on the 522 corridor. That roadway, aside from the interstate, carries more traffic than any other road in the county. We had looked at an improvement to that Reliance Road turn lane, we looked at an improvement to the turn lane at Fairgrounds Road. Some of them are just too short and too narrow to handle the traffic volumes and the truck turning movements that are using them. Those individually didn't appear to score well, so we combined them in an overall corridor safety project, and VDOT feels pretty certain that that one will score pretty well. So we're hopeful of, to be, to be honest, of the six on the list, that's about the only one I have a good feeling for that may score well enough to receive funding. Just being honest, I don't wanna.
I was gonna say, a good point out, we just did a project two years ago on Route 55 that was similar in nature, that was from Town Limits all the way out through the Route 79 intersection, specifically addressed the safety improvements, and that one scored pretty well and got funded.
Yes.
So hopefully, we would have similar success here with this project.
It was a traffic engineering study that you're discussing, yes, so.
Well, as you know, that Reliance Road turn has been an issue.
It has.
And we've discussed and I asked for some review of it because it's so short, and when it backs up, then it creates this dangerous situation. People get annoyed and they'll take, you know, they'll just jut out around the traffic and, and, yeah, it's, it's a critical to get that fixed, so I'm excited about that one.
Well, we'll certainly keep pushing for it.
I have none of, and a second, is the, is the right-of-way available for another turn lane in that area?
Noted. Noted, Mr. Fox. Right-of-way would have to be obtained by any project to put turn lanes in on 55, and that, that would be a phase of a funded project, the design, the right-of-way acquisition, utility relocations, and the actual construction.
Any questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
I looked at that list of the six that you had there, but I didn't see any dollar amounts associated with it. Who determines that? Because that has to be a factor in deciding if a project is gonna be funded and which aren't.
Certainly, during the pre-application and then the ultimate, final application period, we'll be working with the VDOT folks at the Stanton District Office to fine-tune the estimates on what the actual cost will be.
So right now, it's just estimates?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Childers.
Mr. Chair, we have one more item, I'll pass this down. This is another item from Mr. Childers, and he just got some information this morning. And I said, let's go ahead and add it. It has to do with the Front Row Warren County Airport Improvement Plan. This is another item that, files required to send a letter by April 1st. It's crazy, is you just get the information today from the Department of Aviation, so I'll let him walk through his cover memo and answer any questions.
Make you switch paths, really quick.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Stanley, for the intro, and I had mentioned this to Mrs. Cullors and Mr. Fox when we met with the Building Committee, but last week or week before, but with that said, at the start of each fiscal year, the Federal Aviation Administration begins their process of updating their airports' capital improvement plan for the entire nation, and of that, the Front Row Warren County Airport is a part of. We undertake the process early every year. Of course, the federal fiscal year begins October 1st, but around the latter part or first of the year, we always get notice from the FAA that we need to start this process. So after meeting with our FAA and Virginia Department of Aviation engineers and representatives last week, we've developed the attached letter, which you have in your packet. It's addressed to Mr. John Robinson, P.E., who is our Federal Aviation Engineer at the Dulles Office. There's a list of capital projects identified in that letter that Mr. Robinson felt would compete favorably for federal funds, aviation funds, over the planning period, if those funds are approved by Congress. Certainly, everything's subject to the federal budget process. I will point out, in the, in the draft letter, the projects listed for fiscal year 2021 through 2023 are for reimbursements for properties that the county has previously purchased. And in addition, the environmental assessment of those properties would be reimbursed. For capital projects such as these, whether it's land reimbursement, it's actual clearing of trees, or building runways, or building taxiways, et cetera, hard capital improvement projects, the FAA currently funds 90% of that cost. The state, or DOAB, kicks in another 8%, and the remaining 2% is what the county has to manage. So it's a good return on the dollar from the feds and state, but I did wanna mention those. Those are not, those three, the Nicholson, Menifee, and Simpson properties are not properties we're gonna go out and purchase, they're already county-owned property. Previous boards felt that it was necessary to, as those properties came on the market or became available, to purchase them to protect the airport asset. Knowing that we would need them at some point down the road, it's easier and much more economically feasible to purchase them then than it was to allow a developer or builder to come in and build houses on them and then have to turn around and buy them later down the road. As part of the ACIP update process, as Mr. Stanley mentioned, we're required to submit this letter by April 1st of each year. The letter is required to basically not only update our federal CIP, but also to notify the FAA if we do not intend to use our entitlement funds. And what, what they are, the feds, again, subject to congressional approval, sets aside $150,000 a year for Warren County Airport, and if we don't use that money each year on a capital project, then we can ask for it to be rolled over to subsequent years and subsequent projects, so that's what that, that means. That's the case for fiscal year 2019 and 20, which you can see, we don't have a, a project identified for the next fiscal year. While not required by the FAA, past boards have elected to take official approval action on this letter, and if that's the desire of this board, I can certainly develop an agenda item to include on your March 17th meeting, so I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know it's a lot to digest in a short period of time, but.
Does anyone have any questions? I know I do, but anybody else, I'd be happy to let them go first. If I, maybe I don't understand, and I want you to help me get through this. This environmental asset program that we're, the five-year, that's the first thing, it's the five-year development program.
Yes.
It cost us a total of $230,000, correct?
That's what the cost of the project is. It cost the county 2% of that number.
Okay, I get that. I'm trying, I'm trying to get to that.
Yeah.
But we've already had the assessment done.
No, sir.
No, we have, no.
No, sir. That's, that's next fiscal year.
Okay, so at some, in 2021, we're gonna have to come out of pocket, out of county funds, $230,000, $230,000, which we will get reimbursed 90% of, and we'll get another 8% coming to us, and then we would only have to pay for 2%, which is fine, I get that. But when we get down to fiscal year 2023, we've got the land acquisition reimbursement, which is $612,000. Has that already been done? Or is there a mortgage? Is there county funds that's being spent as debt service or anything like that?
There's no debt service, I believe. The county purchased those properties straight...
The county used fund balance, used cash to make those purchases, with the hope that they would be reimbursed once this process was complete.
Okay, so in a nutshell, 90%, $550,000 plus 8%, we go back into our coffers, and we live that $612,000 worth of property, which we only cost us 12 grand. It's a good deal at the end of the day.
At the end of the day.
So one question we have.
I have a question about the airport. So the airport, is there plans to eventually become a regional airport? Or to have service out of that airport? Or what are the future plans of the airport?
No.
Since we bought all this land?
Not a regional, because we're in close proximity to Winchester Regional Airport. And it's always been the, I guess, the philosophy of past boards, that it would be this small recreational use type airport. We're surrounded by a VDOT road system out there. There's houses around it. However, with that said, the feds and state have regulations governing any size airport. They want to protect the asset. The feds and the state are pouring funds into our small recreational general aviation airport. They want to see that asset protected as much as the local government does. With that said, as their regulations and guidelines change over the years, you know, offsets to runways, to the ends, to the sides of them change, increase, lengthen. And as these properties become available to protect the runway, that's prime time to obtain them. The land can be used for other needs. As the airport does grow, we might need more hangar space. We might need larger stormwater management facilities. Right now, our medevac helicopter is right in the middle of the fixed wing operations, which doesn't really mix well. So one of these properties can be used to move the medevac helicopter operations to, to get them out of the middle of the runway, so to speak. So there's a number of reasons why we would purchase property over the years.
Okay, I just wanted to understand the function of the airport as it relates to government or the necessity, essential services to the people.
And that is certainly a nutshell version, Mrs. Oates. Anytime you want to talk further, I'll be glad to with any of you.
One more question, and I'll be through. Will, with the FAA and the other company giving basically 98% back to us, are they going to ask of us to be more regulated than we already are? That, I mean, you don't get nothing for free. But I'm just wondering what type of stipulations are going to come that you're aware of, rightfully?
Typically, with any federal or state grant for capital improvement, it has a life of 20 years. So we're locked into it for 20 years. I can't say that in the 10 years or so I've been with the county and responsible for the airport operations, that the feds or the state have taken the approach that, hey, we're just going to throw this provision on you because we gave you X amount of money to make this capital improvement project. I can't say that's the case.
I have a question, if you don't mind. Excuse me. I understand that because the medevac unit is there, that they're basically keeping it self-sufficient. With the new hospital being built, is that medevac guaranteeing that they're staying there? Or is that the possibility with the new hospital, they'll move out? And if so, then how's the airport? If that's what's sustaining it at this point, what happens then? It's not going to be self-sufficient?
Two responses, yeah. The medevac or PHI is a large portion of our revenue. So it helps, to a large extent, keep us self-sufficient out there. I have heard nothing about them moving to, you know, the new hospital. All I hear from their management team is continual praise for wanting to be there. They moved from Winchester. They like the environment they're in. We've talked about long-term lease agreement with them. I don't know if that's outside of their long-term corporate vision or not, but they're happy just leasing from year to year. But I know on an annual basis, they're always asking me, are we looking at an updated hangar or better accommodations? See, they have a crew that stays on site 24/7, and they're living in a double-wide trailer right now. And we've had discussions with them about building a more permanent crew quarters. And I have shared with them, if we go through that process and that expense, then we will definitely want some sort of a long-term lease arrangement with them so that we can recoup that capital investment. That hasn't scared them off, so.
Mr. Stanley, will we need to put this on the agenda for next week?
Yes, sir. And one other thing I want to point out, and sure I'll hit the nail right on the head. You know, there's a few ways that airports can make money. One is hangar rentals. Two, fuel sales. The current fixed base operator, he gets a portion of the fuel sales, part of the contract. On the hangar rentals, airport in the past had refinanced or refinanced airport hangars. To get the cost down, they sprung out the debt service. Well, 10 years ago or so, Bob, I know we had county refinanced it. But the deal, one set of the hangars is actually going to get paid off here the next four or five years, I think. And then that'll be straight profit back. Long-term is, and you've got a waiting list, is build more hangars at some point to generate additional revenue. But that's only if you build the hangars, pay them off over, say, a 20-year period. And then they start there, at that point, generating additional cash for the airport. That's where it helps generate, that along fuel sales.
Yes.
Generate revenue outside of PHI.
Those are the two major generators for any small general aviation. Even regional airports is fuel sales and hangar rentals. I will point out that because they are the money-making and the profit component of the airport, the feds and state will not pay for the actual hangar construction. They'll do ground prep work, they'll do grading, they'll do asphalt, but they won't actually fund the construction of a hangar. That has to come from the locality or the airport or authority.
Any other questions? Our audience, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Childers. Next on our agenda is the Warren County Humane Society contract. Mr. Stanley and Mr. Jordan?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your packet, you've got a draft animal impairment agreement that Caitlin has crafted up. She crafted it up after we had sat down and met with the representatives from the Humane Society. And I'll say this, that we went in and said, look, we face a tough fiscal year coming up with budget. And they had agreed to leasing the contract to basically have to be level funded for a year. And then, starting with July 1 of '21, it'd be 2% or the CPI, whichever is higher, not to exceed 3%. Just like the current contract was for those two years. I pass this down to you. Staff has, every year, we try to put this together, do a little comparison. I know we get asked from time to time. It's hard. It looks like $300,000, it looks like a lot of money. And I'll say this, I know our local shelter, I think it represents probably about 50% of their budget. And they do a fantastic job of fundraising. They're in a position, I would say now, that they do a whole lot better financially now than they did five, six, seven years ago. The comparison is handed out, Shelley put this together. But it looks at other counties. It looks at, some of these, they operate their own shelter, either through the county or through animal control. And some, they actually farm it out to an outside organization. You'll see there in the second column, if it's like Warren, county-operated facility, yes or no, it's yes. There's their budget, and there's the shelter budget. And they look at the pet population, what they spend for the year. So taking the number of cats and dogs, dividing it to the total number. And also looking at the cost per resident number. And then also kind of what their, how many animals they have adopted out. And you look at that list, and you look at Warren, you know, our cost per resident is about $8.04. Compares very favorably with a lot of our neighbors. A number of years ago, we did look at building our own, what I would call a dog pound. And I know my home community, that's what they have. And, you know, they end up putting a lot of dogs down, and they don't end up adopting them out. It's a tough job, not a decision. I don't think the sheriff back there wants that responsibility. I think Mark and I agree, and we already discussed that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we do this just to say, are we getting a bang for the buck? And, you know, we worked a number of years ago. We got the land donated. They raised the money, they built the shelter. We helped them, we helped them to the extent we can, like helping host their dragon boat races and stuff like that. But they do a whole lot of work. They raised $10,000 with Polar Punch here a few weeks ago. But, you know, I think, do we think we get good value? We do. And I think Sheriff would agree. And I appreciate the fact that they realize our budget situation and were willing to level fund it. And, you know, I think that conversation Caitlin and I had with them went very well. But this, if you're okay, will be on the agenda. If not, we'll probably be on the agenda after, because this number will be in our budget for next year. We want to know kind of what it's going to look like. And that's why we've been having those meetings and trying to get this process started and have that conversation with the sheriff and make sure it pays comfortable with it. Because we want to know, we want to be able to lock down that number. And it'll be locked down for the next three years. We'll know pretty much what it's going to be for the next three fiscal years.
We've got to make this decision either next week or the week, or the next meeting?
Yes, sir, if we can.
Next week's going to be tough, I think. There's a lot going on next week.
There is. I think that's why we're bringing up tonight. And I made no promises to anybody from the Humane Society. I just want to get it done in time for budget so we can understand what that number is going to be. We plugged in a level funding number in there. That's our assumption. But certainly, happy to answer any questions, and we can see where it goes.
I believe we're under on boarding of the dogs this year as well. And I looked at it for quite some time. It's going to cost us way more to create our own than it will to continue what we're doing. It does seem like it's a high number. I said the same thing when I first walked in the door. But the amount of animal control calls we get a day, I understand why Doug kicked it to me, with Sheriff Dog. We really do. We're really facing, between our schools and animal controls, that's probably 70% of what I do every single day. We really get a lot of calls for animals, animal control, whether it be bears, cats, dogs, so forth. And they really have been a really blessing to work with. I have to say, the Humane Society has really been good for us. And looking into the future, Phil, the sheriff's office, I think it's going to cost us way more to develop our own system than to continue what we're doing. I think it would almost triple over the first three or four years from the numbers I was able to look at.
Thank you, Mark. Any additional questions, if you have? How about any... Suggestion to put on the first meeting in April? Mr. Farnes? Thank you. Next discussion is about the Fraud, Waste, and Abuse webpage. That one is me. And I actually asked this to be put on the discussion list because we have a webpage already for anybody that wants to be anonymous to talk about fraud, waste, or abuse. We want to make it better than what it already is. And Mrs. Colors has took it upon herself and threw us to get more information. So I want to turn it over to you to see if we can understand what we're doing or what we'd like to do.
Well, last year, when I was running for this office, talking to people and the problems we were having in the community made me think of, you know, problem solving. That's kind of what I like to do. And I remembered my husband talking about the state's Fraud, Waste, and Abuse hotline. So I, at that time, investigated it and brought it to the board as a recommendation that Warren County adopted. And they did. And it's on the webpage on the procurement part. And it's kind of hard to get to. You have to go through multiple stages. Hasn't been very well advertised or anything. So at that time, my thought was that it should go with the Sheriff's Department because Fraud, Waste, and Abuse, you're investigating it. They've got the investigative team. So what I'm asking and brought back for now is to move it to the Sheriff's Department. And the way it works at the state level is that you, as you see something, you have a concern. Not everybody feels comfortable getting up at a meeting or calling into the Sheriff's Department. They want to remain anonymous. So you would have a way of calling in. Your number would be blocked. You're not asked for your personal information. If you want to give it, you're welcome to give it. And then you just basically say what you have a concern about. You're at the state level, you're given a code number, a case number. You can call back, and they will tell you simply by giving them the case number if the case is still open or if it's been closed. But at least you can call back and, you know, readdress it. At this level, it was online. And I'll be honest, I'm not the greatest computer operator, and I know a lot of people that are or don't have access. So I think a phone line would be better. So I called the Sheriff's Department and just said, do you have an anonymous line that could be used? And they said, yes. It's going to be a work in progress if it's moved there. And, but that's what this discussion is about. And Sheriff Butler, if you want to come up and say anything. They were jelly-on the spot with this and eager to have it. They see it as an asset to their department.
We absolutely welcome it. Anything that's fraud and abuse... I thought I spoke loud enough.
They get you on the record now.
Actually, we welcome it. Anything that's fraud and abuse, we think we should be handling and investigating anyway. We are the trained individuals. We have investigators that are well-trained, know how to go through it. So what we've done is we've set up a phone inside a secure area, inside the secure building, that only really one individual can get to it. That way, there isn't any conflict of interest. There isn't anything like that. And it will probably also go to the lieutenant position that we're trying to create with one of our empty lieutenant spots. And that is a professional standards investigator, which we believe in today's society, most accredited departments have that individual anyway for internal affairs and so forth. So it's not just that, you know, up to me. It's actually going to a committee. So that individual will actually come in, hear the phone messages, set up a case, and it'll be investigated and reviewed by that individual. So it's something we're actually, I think we can probably help and save our county money in the long run. I think it's a good thing. I welcome it. I welcome the work with anyone who's interested in it. I think we can do a good thing with it.
Mr. Chairman, I was the person who put together the Fraud, Waste, and Abuse webpage on the county website. And ever since we adopted it back in last fall, we've had absolutely no one respond to it at all. And ever since we adopted it back in last fall, we've had absolutely no one respond to it at all. I did a little bit of just searching on my machine. So it's actually under the Finance Department because a lot of the main people's concerns were regarding fraud, waste and abuse of funds. So it's under the Finance Department. If you search the word "waste" on the county website, it's number two as a search hit. If you search the word "fraud," it's number one as a search hit. And if you search the word "abuse," it's also number one as a search hit. I actually received my very first complaint this morning. That was exciting. It was a gentleman who had an eyesore and a health concern about Shorestop Convenience Store. So I forwarded that to Joe Petty, our zoning administrator, and he did a site visit this afternoon and got a response back out to him. So I'm not, you know, saying that the Sheriff's Office wouldn't be able to supplement and help us in that regard, but those sorts of complaints, I feel like would be better managed by county staff. But I'm not really sure how best the Board would want to handle that. But I just wanted to report that I got my first complaint today, so that was exciting.
That's great of you. So it's an asset.
I'm not saying we shouldn't work together. I think that's the whole purpose of all this, is so all of us are working together. We get calls constantly, obviously. We field them all day long. We had just the other day at one of our waste sites, human waste being dumped over in the farms. So we had to investigate that. We get constantly dumping on different sites or improper dumping that we actually are taking the steps to address. So that's why I think if we're already doing it, I don't mind working with anybody. The hotline, I know at least it's in a secured area.
Can we add the hotline as we could? She has that secured, but add it as an alternate and say, "Or if you feel more comfortable reporting directly to the Sheriff's Office, this is your hotline."
Yeah, I mean, like I said, that's not a mission.
I think it would be best to have a central. And then if the same call came to you, you could still forward it to Mr. Petty and it could still go through that same process. And it would take one thing off the priority business play as well.
And right now, we know, because this is part of the discussion, that it's not, this is not the end all. We're not trying to change anything. We're just trying to bring the idea out for us to look at because it's important that we all do work together. And fraud and waste and abuse can be everywhere. And to be able to have the total anonymity, if that's what that person wants, if it is, if we can guarantee that through the county, if we can guarantee that through the Sheriff's Department, that's correct. But if we can't, then we've got to constantly think or, like we're doing now, talk about it and put together a plan that will work for both sides of the fence.
The thing that concerns me is if anything becomes criminal, now we have a middleman. We have a he says, she says. That's why I'm looking at it as, if I show up on scene and I take a report as a just regular patrol officer, I hate being that guy that has to turn it over to somebody and kick it up because I received information that may never come to fruition to the investigator. So I would always like to hold the scene, call the investigator. All right, now you talk to interview him. That way you get a one-time, first-time shot. That's why when I look at anything that has to do fraud, waste or whatever in our community, yeah, I'm sorry, I will always stand at the Sheriff's Office. Though it does bring more work for us and we're full, but...
Will there be an awareness back to the Board of Supervisors?
We have to, we have to.
That's what I'm getting.
You have to, you have to have your counterbalances. If not, nothing's going to work. So, I mean, we're all for helping whatever way you want to go. As you saw, you asked, we made it happen and we're going to make it happen.
Turn it around in less than half a day.
An hour, no, an hour.
Okay.
I got a call back hours ago.
I mean, y'all were ready to go and we were going, oh.
No, I told yours is what my exact words were.
Well, I've been told I'm a little impatient, so. I've been told that quite a bit in the last two months. So that's probably the biggest thing that I'm learning in this new adventure.
And I think your ability, you know, it needs to be out there where the people, it's easy to access. It's, I can't remember what it was, years ago, there was a crime tip line that you could call into. And it used to run across the billboard of the local TV informational channel. You saw it everywhere. I don't know what happened to it and I can't think of what the technical name, but you heard it all the time. And this one, there's been basically very little information out there that it's here. I mean, how many people in the room knew it and knew how to get to it?
You need to have it on the front page, right on your, right on your Board of Supervisors' front page, Fraud, Waste and Abuse, so that people can know where you are.
Once we actually take over, it will be on our website as well.
And like I said, yeah, if, know where, on the Sheriff's page, it needs to be several places.
It does.
So that even if it's one line, one line that you're using, that's fine. But it needs to be, when you come into the Board of Supervisors, when you come into Sheriff's Office, when you come into your line over there, whatever it is, it's got to be some gathering point where somebody sees it and can direct it to the proper authorities. Because if it's dealing with finance, then it should be going to somebody in the finance. If it's logistics somewhere.
I agree.
It needs to be able to be shoveled off immediately to somebody who is in that direct line to handle it.
And that is why the emails come directly to me. And I'm able to, because I work in the administration office, we get calls 100 times a day with everything from getting a marriage license to who do I report a death to, to I have a complaint about trash. So being able to work in the administration office and know exactly who to reach out to about that, that's why it comes to me.
That same line, it should be, then that same type of line should be in his, anywhere else so that it can be there, so that people know where to call.
See, that's why we're talking.
And you never know, I mean, to me, if it, anybody could call in for anything. So if the possibility that it's going to be a criminal, then it needs to start with you where you can still disseminate to Ms. Mouch and she can do if it's an event like it was today.
I will always stand and, you know, the mechanic can decide whichever way they want to go. I will always stand that I want the information so I can decide whether or not there's a criminal act or not. If it's not a criminal act, it needs to be turned over to administrative. If there's a criminal act, I'll let you know the outcome when I'm done with my case. But I truly believe that. And I will always stand by that. Because I do believe, no matter, I do believe in the, there's things that happen in our society that someone might not believe needs to go to the criminal justice system. And I think in some areas, that's not their call to say. I've seen it in 20-some years of law enforcement. There's things that happen that people do not turn over because they don't want someone, something to happen to that individual or whatever. So I believe if an anonymous call comes out, I believe our Sheriff's Office should decide whether or not it's criminal or administrative. If it's administrative, it should automatically go to the county administrator and the Board of Supervisors. If it's criminal in nature, I guess that the Sheriff's Office will investigate it thoroughly, professional, and conclude with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir. I personally don't think it's wise to have Sheriff's Department be the clearinghouse for everything. You're talking fraud, waste and abuse, they're different categories. Fraud being criminal, the other two potentially not, typically not. And I would think we should split these things off and have the fraud go there because you're dealing with criminal. But not have them be the clearinghouse because the other two categories are mostly whether someone is abusing a procedure or whether a procedure is not efficient is what I consider to be waste and abuse. So if there's a way to split them so that the potential criminal things right off the bat go to Sheriff for investigation. And then the others go internal into county administration for initial investigation. Now, if there's any indication that there may be, you know, some law violations, then you transfer it over to the Sheriff's Department. But we have, the Sheriff's Department's full of, you know, well-trained people in law enforcement. And we don't want their valuable time being spent on procedural and financial issues that will probably be the majority of the calls and others suspected we can't.
I think to Mark's point, I think he's qualified to determine right up front whether it's criminal or not. And he can disseminate it immediately. He's not going to be doing an investigation and then find out, oh, this is actually just an abuse. And he'll know right away.
I would think it's obvious that requires an investigation. I prefer a lower class of paid, good person deal with that before it gets escalated to the highly trained law enforcement.
To simplify, it just seems like a one-stop phone call versus someone having to make a decision on, do I use this one or do I use this one?
Exactly. You need a...
One central and then it gets disseminated. Because they're, they're going to take a phone call. It's not, and they're going to be able to tell from a phone call whether they need to investigate or make another phone call.
So the volume of calls you'd be expected to receive on this and the experience in multiple months is only one. And that, was that a criminal or not a criminal? So I suspect that when it gets advertised, that the majority of calls are going to be for the waste and abuse. Where people are not using the procedure right or the procedure is not inefficient where you could save money by doing it a different way. So if the clearing was at the county level, the things that were obviously criminal that got forwarded to the highly trained criminal people, still have the one-stop shop.
We already do that anyway. People call 911 every day. We go to the house and we decide, okay, it's not criminal.
You also got social services that I'm just...
So, I mean, we're already doing it anyway. It really is, it's 911. People call every single day, I probably field 20 calls a day. Yeah, that's simple, sorry. But, so that's why I would just, me personally, as the Sheriff's Office, I want to be able to decide before anyone else gets involved, is this criminal? Because if I can time-sensitive matter, get surveillance on something, I may be able to solve the issue before it gets out of hand. That's really what I'm looking at. I'd rather get compliance instead of actually have a long, drawn-out investigation that really didn't need to go that far.
But maybe we could have some kind of trial once it's advertised. And if we find out that there's more administrative issues coming in on the line rather than criminal matters, reconsider it at a later point on how to adjust it.
And that's the whole thing. This is, we're in the infancy of this and we have to tweak it as it goes.
I agree with one minute.
Yeah, we've got to have one minute. I think that's an agreement that everybody has made, one minute. Now, so where it goes, apparently it's disseminated. That's another issue that we're trying to help resolve now as part of our conversations. And we're, obviously, we're a fair piece of way from actually getting a resolution to that. But conversation's always good. And I know, I appreciate it. It just builds our community that much more. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
You need also, Jim Jan, by the way.
Hey, Jim.
You also need to consider the social services in that.
Yes, sir.
Because that affects him back there big time. Because you're going to get abuse calls.
Absolutely.
You get abuse calls, just not from waste type, but you get abuse calls from the senior sentence. You get calls from somebody, neighbor, and stuff like that, which fall into his, by the way.
Absolutely.
So you need to make sure that that's included in that section.
Yes, sir. That is, we've had that conversation already. So I appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. Can we spend five or 10 minutes to see if anybody wants to actually say anything? I think Paul, you wanted to talk for a minute, but I don't know if anybody else wants to speak. You're more than welcome to for...
There's no way that guy can talk for a minute.
I know. I saw 30 minutes there, that ain't going to happen. Just so that you know, we do have a work session and we're trying to get into that. It's all about budget, so.
I'll make it quick.
Please, thank you.
As I can.
30 minutes, okay.
I just want to say that it's unbelievable that three new members of the Board can calm a county down. I really appreciate that and I'm sure everybody back here does too.
Here, here.
There's been some great changes. I can't say enough. I do want to say, I hope you all have taken a good look at the school budget. I see several million that can be taken out of it in a heartbeat. Take money from that and give it to the fire and rescue employees. Give them some more money. They put their life on the line. I would like to read a comment that deals with the town and the county. If I may. "The interim town manager is trying to help the EDA to become insolvent. He is doing this to help justify his longing for a town EDA. It is time for the town council to take their control of what they were elected to do to rein in the town manager and listen to the citizens of the town. I have my doubts about this because some on the council are 100% behind the town manager and the others are just followers. Written agreements the town has with the EDA and the county are being ignored by the interim town manager. It is unbelievable one individual can undermine both the town and the county. It is unbelievable an interim town manager was given the full power of full-time manager. All of this was done behind closed doors and was not looked at as a logical decision that anyone who had any business sense would have made." The other thing I have is kind of on a personal issue. I've waited a couple of months to do it to make sure I can do it. It's got to do with a little bit of humanity. This past November, our oldest daughter who lived in Colorado took her own life. I wanted to express in public my wife and mine thanks to Mr. Stanley and Mr. Carter, who I wish had been here, who reached out to us with their condolences. Both received my wrath from this podium many times. But both took their time to reach out to us and give us their condolences. And that means a lot. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Okay.
I said, "Meeting's adjourned." Do we have to make a motion?
No, I don't believe we have to make a motion. Our meeting is adjourned for this evening so we can get into our budget hearing.
We'll be in the next one, right?
We'll be in the next one. Thank you.